Called order, the city council meeting for City of East Grand Forks for Tuesday, January 18th, 2022. City clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Steve Gander?
Here.
Council President Mark Olsted?
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Reapell?
Here.
Council members Clarence Vetter?
Here.
Dale Helms?
Here.
Tim Johnson?
Here.
Mark Demers?
Present.
Brian Larson?
Here.
As term of call, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Opening forum and opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on items not on the current agenda. Items of current council action will be referred to staff boards and commissions for research and future council agendas if appropriate. Any members of the council chambers like to address the council this time that's not on the agenda? I see none. Move on to approval of minutes for the January 4th council meeting and the January 11th work session.
Move.
By Reapell.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Questions or discussion? Rule call, please.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Move on to scheduled bid lettings. There is none. Scheduled public hearings. We have a public hearing and propose annexation of approximately 22 acres in a city located near County Road 17 in West U. It's Highway 2. Motion to enter in public hearing.
Move. Second.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion is carried. Public hearing is now open. I guess I could start with it. Yes. Otherwise Nancy, if you wanted to bring anything. What we're here for tonight is there is a proposal to annex approximately 22 acres into the city. This is the first step in the process for that. Anyways, so we are here to take public input then on the annexation process after a public hearing has been concluded. There's an agenda later in the, on the agenda for approval of the, starting of the annexation process. So, as a quick staff report, otherwise we can take any comments from the public and then after that, any questions from the council. If you'd like to address the council anytime, please come up to podium to do so. State your name and address.
Afternoon, guys. A lot of you I know, but a few I don't. I'm John Jeffrey. I live at 43125 200th Street Southwest in East Grand Forks. I'm here on behalf of Huntsville Township. I don't know if everybody's familiar with how this works in Minnesota, but you know, just like you guys are a municipality and have a governing board, Huntsville, like most townships, you know, is also essentially a municipality in Minnesota. We have our own zoning rules. We have our board that consists of three folks. It's me, chairman here is Scott Bushy, and Dan Zaveral is the third supervisor on our board. Dan, because of his work with Zaveral's, you know, is staying out of this. But we're here on behalf of the township and its citizens, you know, to address this annexation. And, you know, I realize that this process today is talking about annexation, but you know, what it's about is putting the asphalt plant someplace in Polk County. We already, you know, dealt with this at one point at the county level. That plant was going to be over by Simplot. The county then rejected that, you know, so now we're talking about potentially putting it here. Just want to clarify that Huntsville, you know, does its own zoning. So unlike some of the other townships around here that leave it up to the county, we control zoning in our jurisdiction. You guys have the upper hand. You know, we know that you can force annexation, you know, take this chunk away from us and then you're the boss with regards to, you know, what's going to happen to that 22 acres and what's going to be there, et cetera. But we're just here to explain, you know, from our perspective, what we're concerned about. So, first off, you know, as I mentioned in the letter that we sent to you guys, we do take care of zoning. Our zoning right now has this chunk and all that area zoned commercial. We did that back in 2008 and intentionally because, you know, we do have residents that are not too far. Some of them are at the meeting here today. In particular, we got, you know, five houses that are relatively close. Two, they're going to be right across the road, right across Highway 2 from this proposed site. So I'm really worried about these guys. And then, you know, farther to the south where Stable Days is located, you got three homes there. So you got the, the folks that own Stable Days, they took over the Riverbend, they got a home there. The golf shop, that turned into a single-family residence and they got that place. And then if you go a little bit down the road, then there's the log cabin that Denny Blackman used to live in and that place, you know, is, is also occupied. So you got folks that are going to be relatively close and impacted by, you know, whatever land use you decide that's going to be there. The other thing is, you know, from a land use perspective, I'm sure Nancy Ellis, you know, because I've worked with her for years and she kind of always pounds home, you know, order, right? You're not supposed to just hopscotch and have some zoning here and some zoning there. This particular zoning is just a flag. If you look at the map, it ties to County Road 17. The road goes north for about a quarter mile and then you got the 22-acre parcel. Everything around that, you know, would still be township, still be zoned commercial, and then you're going to have your little island of industrial zoning right in the middle of that. So I think this is the opportune time for the township and the city to talk about some orderly annexation of the land around there, you know, because what's going to happen next? We have the, you know, this little industrial zone, and I mean, the Zaverals don't use it, you know, for an asphalt plant, but they sell it to somebody else. I mean, what does it mean to have an industrial zone? Can you have like Monsanto show up there or those guys in Grand Forks, you know, the Chinese guys are going to build whatever plant? I mean, what can, what can go in there? And we know we got Crystal, right? But Crystal's a huge employer, been there for years, and all the people that got their houses bought it eyes wide open that they were going to smell the lagoon, smell Crystal. Okay, they bought into that. But now we're going to have something new coming there. And that's, that's the challenge, you know, that I see for these guys that are relatively close because it is an asphalt plant, right? And so I know, you know, that, that Zaverals don't intend to hurt folks and, you know, they're going to follow MPCA rules, but the mere fact that MPCA is monitoring this, got to give you a license, that tells you something, right? That this is not just your average, you know, ideal Aerosmith or somebody that's grinding some things. You know, this has got stuff going up into the air, both potential carcinogens and particulate matter, you know, dust and whatever. Those things, you know, are a concern. So even if you follow the rules, you still got the impact on adjacent properties' value just by perception, you know. You know if you got two pieces of property and one is, you know, they're identical pieces of property, you put one alongside something like this and one that's just out in the middle of nowhere, the one that's closer to this plant, their property values are affected. So those two guys that are right across the road, you know, they are going to be doggone close to this asphalt plant. And what do we know? I mean, we got, I mean, there's probably a lot of unknowns, but I think, you know, everybody is concerned about smell and dust and noise. And that those guys that are close are going to be impacted by those things. And who are they going to be calling? You know, you don't answer to them, right? Because they're not your constituents. But when they have a problem, who do they turn to? You know, they get the smell from the city of East Grand Forks, but they're still, you know, not East Grand Forks residents. So it puts us in, you know, a real tough position. So, you know, like I said, we, we understand you guys got the upper hand. We are just hoping that, you know, maybe you can table this. We can have some discussions about what should happen to that property, not just the little flag, the 22 acres, but that whole piece, you know, that goes from Crystal all the way up to the dike. At some point, it probably makes sense that that's all your jurisdiction, right? But let's talk about, you know, what would be good use of that land going forward? How's it going to impact businesses to the south? How's it going to impact homeowners to the east? And then, you know, come up with a game plan, a cooperative game plan. So that's, that's kind of my pitch. Anybody have questions of me?
Better. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jeffrey. One question for you. I'm just wondering if the Zaverals have, has, have they approached the township to put in this asphalt plant and been denied, or they haven't even come to you?
They, they approached the township on the other location, the one that was just to the north. If you know where the Simplot piece is, then there was a chunk of ground kind of to the west there between 220 and Simplot, and then to the north of the Red Lake River. That's where they wanted to put the original one. And that's the one that we had discussion on. With regards to this one, I mean, we received notice, you know, when, when you guys sent it out saying you were going to have the hearing, that's, then we got wind of the fact that the, the plant was going to be there. I mean, they came, we invited John and he, he came with one of his engineers to a township meeting and we did have residents come in to talk about, you know, what they planned on doing and, and, you know, their concerns, et cetera. We, we didn't resolve anything at that point. But, so I mean, there's, it's not like we had no discussions with them, but anyway.
Thank you.
Any other members of the audience like to address the council this time?
Hi. My name is Rob Raymond. Some of you maybe know me as John Roberts. I'm at 17702 429th Avenue Southwest. That is the log house in the old Riverbend Supper Club area there. Just a few things. Hopefully you council members, I did drop off some stuff last Friday and hopefully that you got that information. Want to talk about some of the effects on these nearby neighborhoods and stuff. You know, Polk County, as he had mentioned, unanimously voted down their asphalt permit applications. And so now they're trying to get this land annexed. But just some of the, the highlights here. Air quality. Asphalt plants release harmful airborne particulates which are hazardous to health. Now, these fumes are known as to cause or exacerbate respiratory ailments, other health issues including cancer, liver damage, neurological problems, skin irritation, headaches, and nausea. In fact, a survey by an environmental organization indicated that 45% of residents living within a half a mile of an asphalt plant reported a deterioration of their health after the plant opened. The smell. Now, the beet plant was mentioned. The beet plant might smell once in a while, but it's not a health hazard like this. Now, I know it's Zaveral's state, the plant will have control measures to minimize these orders, but anyone living downwind of Simplot or the Crystal Sugar beet plant, they realize that these smells can be nauseating. They cannot be contained, even though these plants are in compliance with state regulations. Now, there are no control mechanisms either on, on the trucks to reduce or capture any of these fumes. These smells not only prohibit it outside enjoyment, but you notice it in your houses, too. They will cause headaches, stomach upset, irritating respiratory symptoms. In fact, one of Simplot's main concerns was that the smell of asphalt can actually leach into their steel shipping containers, which in turn would make their product junk, in the garbage. If it can go through a steel shipping container, what's it going to do through your screen windows or even your windows in your house? The noise, this plant would have a massive impact to the noise levels in the surrounding areas. I mean, during an interview, a gentleman who lives over a mile away from an asphalt plant stated that although he cannot see the facility, it sounds like he got a jet engine right next to your window. In addition to the noise from the plant, the increase in the truck traffic on Highway 2 and Business 2, I mean, it's going to cause massive noise increases. Now, this plant will create truck noise year-round. They're talking 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. Number of trucks is expected to average 20 trucks per hour. Now, that's the number that was stated when they tried to get the county permit application. These truck loads will also impede, of course, the sugar beet harvest. The wind will also carry noise and fumes, especially down the river. So this plant will impact more than just the neighborhoods and homes in close proximity. Property value, they say property losses for homes near an asphalt plant average 15 to 30% and as high as 56%. The Center for Health, Environment, and Justice Fact Pack for asphalt plants, this was from 2019, lists 25 research studies showing serious negative health effects specifically due to asphalt plants. Now, this does not complete, is not a complete list. It doesn't include the hundreds of thousands of studies on individual toxins associated with asphalt emissions. The Fact Pack also includes a six-page document of filed, or filed complaints for one asphalt plant alone. Now, some of those complaints, excessive dust, smoke, heavy lingering odor, nauseating gases causing headaches, visible emissions, grit, black oily substances and soot coating outside furniture properties and vegetation. Some of these complaints indicate that photos were provided. For most of these issues, investigations following the asphalt plants were in compliance with state regulations. I know somebody that works by the one down on Gateway, they said they come out of work, cars covered with soot. I know another guy that works for a competitor who had, they also have an asphalt plant. He said, "You do not want to be anywhere near this asphalt plant." Now, in addition to these concerns that'll directly affect properties, business values, health and quality of life, studies have also been done for specific plant permits in other states. They report concerns potentially applicable to East Grand Forks and surrounding areas. Now, these include negative effects on biological resources, water quality and contamination, utilities and service systems, greenhouse gas emissions, contamination of products due to odor absorption and grime settlements. The effect on farmland, soil, and crops should receive specific consideration as well as products of nearby commercial businesses. Now, when you go as the crow flies, there's a lot of businesses that are fairly close. It does not seem like it out there. But, I mean, you got, of course, Burt's, you know, Lumber Mart, Crystal Sugar, but you also have the Corn Maze. Biglin Road is not close. South Elementary and Central Middle School are close. Residential neighborhoods, Hugo's, you have got East Side Express, Luigi's, which cooks food. You've got Joe's Diner, which also cooks. Less than two miles from downtown, and it, it's just, in our opinion, not an acceptable area for an asphalt plant. This would, this project, I do not think should be approved. They tried to even get it farther out of town when they were trying to get it out by the Simplot plant on Highway 2, and it got voted down unanimously, and now they're trying to move it closer to town. We moved out to our area for a specific reason, and that's all changing rapidly right now. All we can do is ask that this please does not go through because we don't plan on living out there forever. We want to retire and downsize eventually at one time. I'm worried, what are we going to do with a house that smells like asphalt all the time? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the audience like to address the council this time? Any questions from the council? I see none. Take a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Motion.
By Reapell?
Second.
Second by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion is carried. The public hearing is now closed. Thank you. Move on to the consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda will be adopted with one motion. However, council members may request individual items being pulled from the consent agenda for discussion and actions they choose. Any members like the consent agenda pulled four through eight?
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Vetter makes, oh, excuse me, Mr. Demers makes the motion, four through eight. I bet you Mr. Vetter wants a second, doesn't he?
Sure, I'll second it.
Mr. Vetter seconds. Any questions or discussion? Rule call, please.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Acknowledge the receipt of reports of officers, boards, and commissions. Regular meeting, Minnesota Water, Light, Power, and Building Commission for December 15th, 2021. Communication. Acknowledge the veto resolution of number 22-01-09D authorizing a local sales tax at 1.25 for 30 years for park and recreation facility improvements. Move on to old business. Reconsider adopting resolution 22-01-09D supporting authority imposed local sales tax to fund specific capital improvements, providing regional benefits to establish a 1.25% tax and $27,500 revenue to be raised to tax over 30 years, and authorize a city-issue bond supported by tax revenue. By Demers?
Second.
Second by Reapell. Discussion, comments? Not, rule call, please.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Vetter?
No.
Helms?
No.
Motion fails. Move on to new business. Number 12. Consider approving ordinance number 32-4 Series annexing land located in Huntsville Township, Polk County, Minnesota pursuant to Minnesota Statute 414.033 subdivision 2, subsection 3 permitting an annexation by ordinance first reading. Is there a motion?
Second.
By Reapell. Questions or discussion? Mr. Vetter?
Clarification. Even if we annex this in, do they still have to go to the county to get the permit to run the plant?
They have to go to the state.
The state?
Yeah, the, from my understanding, right now what we're doing is we're annexing the property in. Typically what ends up happening is, is that the, we, we were, we asked what the use of it was going to be ahead of time so that we had an understanding what they were going to do, do with it, and that, that's why it came to the petition. They have to follow all MPCA guidelines, state guidelines, and everything else. We also had to, in conjunction with this, and I know Mr. Jeffrey's indicated they have it, they have it zoned commercial. Right now, we have just have a placeholder which is required that if we're going to approve this ordinance, we have to have a zoning regulation for it. Based upon the use, we've already preliminary designated as, as industrial as has been indicated. If for some reason this ordinance doesn't get passed, the zone just reverts back to the commercial from the township because it's not in the city limits. So, we've, that's what we've done so far. I'll let Nancy address some of this stuff, but we've just followed the statute accordingly.
Yeah. State statute states that you have to have a city zoning designation. So it has to be a zoning district within the city limits. So you establish that zoning or you designate it that, that designation has to be in place when you send it down to the state for annexation, if approved. Now, to answer your question, this will again require more steps. If the annexation is approved, then typically with a general industrial district, which is what it would be zoned if it was brought into the city, this type of a use would require a special use permit. And for a special use permit, that also requires a public hearing. And it also requires, it would, you know, one of them would be we can place special conditions on that permit. So we can set time, we can set, you know, like hours of operation, we can set the, you know, months that it's open. We can designate other such things. We can require it to have city facilities, water, sewer, electric, those types of things. We can also then require an MPCA permit. We can require testing. There's a number of things that we can require with a special use permit. Or we can review it, decide if we don't approve that type of use, but it's annexed into the city. There are other uses that you can use an industrial zoned property for. They would also have to plat the property because it's brought in right now and it meets in bounds description. So it would also require a plat and site plan and those types of things. So there are still a number of steps.
Okay, so the prior location that they requested over by the bean plant, they had to go to the county planning and zoning. They go to the county because it wasn't within the city?
No, they did not. They went to the county for a different site.
Correct.
Right.
So, but they won't have to go to the county for this one because it's within the city limits if we annex it?
If we annex it, yes. And it, and it's my understanding that they did not go to the county or the township first to get approval for this spot. They just petitioned for annexation and requested to establish zoning at this particular spot.
I see here it's the first reading. As far as the city activity, what follows out of this action? Meaning what? So it's first reading, what comes next after tonight? If it, if it would be passed? Well, if it's passed on the first reading, then we have to have a second reading, and then it has to be published. And then, once, once that's gone through, then it has to be submitted down to the Minnesota Board of Adjustments. And typically, because it's under 414033 subdivision 2.3, as long as we've gotten the ordinance passed, we've given the proper notices, we've had the proper public hearings. Under those circumstances, it is approved and submitted, and then it has to go to the Secretary of State. It has to, a copy ends up going to the township and a copy of it gets submitted to the, to the county auditor and then recorded at the recorder's office.
And that, that has to happen before we can review any other applications from them. We can't do them concurrently, so.
Ron, that was TMI right there. I was especially curious about the next step after this. And so, what can happen is, I guess we haven't heard a lot from adjacent property owners. I've heard from one. And certainly, and certainly we've heard from you all here tonight, which is quite relevant. So if we, whatever we do tonight, I know we'll hear more between now and the second reading, and so that'll give us some time to, to gather that input. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Asking first before I go to, Mr. Jeffrey, you have something to add?
So when does the second reading occur? Like at the next council meeting? Is that how that works?
Certainly can. Yep.
I'm just worried about timing. And then, so it's not an ordinance controlling the second reading?
You have to vote twice and then it actually has to be published.
For 30 days.
For 30 days.
Does anyone have any other questions for me?
After the second vote, and then if, when it's published for 30 days, is there, do they still, is there still time for them to appeal and whatever else for that, or is that a done deal at that point? You know what I mean?
Well, they, they don't, if there was going to be some type of an appeal, they would have to bring that themselves. It wouldn't come to this body.
No, no, but Ron, do we have, I think the question is, does the township or the residents have a legal?
My understanding is no. Are we wrong? Can we, like, sue you guys?
I don't think you can sue the city, no.
You could sue anybody you want, I think.
And again, it's just annexation of the property. We, we're not approving the asphalt plant.
Correct. That was going to be my point. Right now, all we're doing is annexing the land into the city. After that, then they've got to come to us and say, "We want a special use permit to put an asphalt plant in." And then we can tack on all the other...
Yep. And we do not accept applications until it's been recorded and approved by the state. I mean, it has to be in city limits before they can apply. That's how we've done everything else, so.
Okay, then what happens if, okay, say, like you said, they come, we annex this in, and then they come and apply, and it doesn't get approved? Does it, does that property, does it revert back to the?
It doesn't revert back to the township. No, it stays within city limits. It doesn't revert back to the township. No, it stays within city limits. They can either put a different sort of industrial use in it, general industrial, or if they so choose, they could try to revert, you know, the annexation. It's possible to do. It doesn't happen very often, but it, it's another state statute allows them to revert that back to the township slash county.
It could stay farmland, too. Even as it's annexed, it could stay farmland.
It could.
Absolutely.
It, it could stay empty until they're ready to find, you know, another use or try again. I mean, there's lots of options, so.
Oh, no, I guess I was just gonna say, as far as an annexation part of it, with any of the cities that I'm aware of, I, I've never heard of a lawsuit of, or an annexation. I've seen some maybe for like uses and that kind of thing, but as far as an annexation, I have not heard of one. I'm not to say that there hasn't been one, I just have never been involved in one.
I'm sorry, one final question. After annexation, with regard to utilities, water, sewer, power, et cetera, at whose option, say, for example, I know sometimes it's not practical to, to run sewer, we don't have a lift station in proximity to that. At whose option then is the sewer connection made? City option, landowner option, or a cooperative between?
That would be part of our development agreement when we do the plat. Because when we do plats, now we require development agreements, so.
But when you, when you say option, do you mean, when, do you mean by who's going to be financially responsible for it when you say option?
Yep, and if we say we do not have, I don't even know, but if we didn't have a lift in the, in the proximity to, to do it, you'd have to actually install a lift station to serve that. Could we then be obligated to do that, or say, nope, you're unseptic?
Well, you could do all of those things, but typically what ends up happening is the infrastructure, the original infrastructure is by the individuals that want it to be installed. And at this point, if it's going to be this asphalt plant, there's very limited infrastructure that's necessary. You got to electric. Right now, the part of the ordinance indicates that we had to provide notice about the electric. However, there isn't any electric usage in that, so there isn't a change. However, the city, the water and light has a, we'll just say, an acquisition contract or agreement with PKM, so this territory is going to ultimately have to be discussed with PKM on, on the territorial agreement. Regarding the limited amount of property taxes that are on there, it's in the ordinance, but the city's required to pay the county, the township for that amount pro rata over the twenty-two point six acres over two years unless there's some other type of an agreement that's made. And that's, those numbers were based on the taxes that are in place right now.
Water and sewer has been discussed with our engineering department, and they're putting together estimates. Because we will need those for the development agreement if it is so approved. Because we have to look at that when we annex property. That's one of the things we have to look at, is if we can provide city services or facilities, and at what cost.
And I guess I'll say, traditionally in, in annexations and development agreements, the, the property owner is required to...
Yes.
...so that they have to go get it. Typically, the cities do not pay for it.
And actually, right, I, I might be talking out of turn, but I don't believe so. We do have a similar agreement in place right now for some of those businesses that are out there because they're being, I believe, supplied by rural water at this point in time. And that was an agreement between the parties that it wasn't going to be extended out there due to the cost.
Thank you. Good.
Other questions for Nancy? See none? Roll call, please.
Beappel?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Epstein.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Carried. Number thirteen. Consider adopting resolution twenty-two dash zero-one dash one-one, declaring adequacy of the petition in order in preparation and report of feasibility for improvements to Fourth Street Northeast. Move. By Helms?
Second.
Second by Demers. Questions or discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Beappel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number fourteen. Discussion on local sales tax and consider taking action settling, setting a local sales tax and term of tax for park and recreation facilities improvements.
Move.
We have all moved.
We move and what?
Discussion in consideration. We can... See the second on, it's a discussion, we might have a consideration later.
I did.
Any discussion? Mr. Reed, then?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, council members. Just, of course, wanted to follow up on the email that I sent late last week with some summary from the building committee in our conversation last Thursday. There was, I'd say, just to summarize the, the meeting, there was a lot of spirited discussion on the project in general, and, and if there's going to be sales tax funding available at all, what does the project look like at a narrowed-down version? I'd say, in large part, the committee is still really excited about the concept plan that we put forward and, and trying to work really hard to figure out how we can achieve that as a group. We think strongly that sales tax revenue is one piece of the puzzle to help pay for that project. The dollar amount still yet to be determined. But we looked at, you know, how can we start to chunk this project apart between sales tax, between fundraising, if there's any other revenue sources, you know, we're talking about potentially state bonding. The governor sent out notice just today what his recommendations are for a bonding bill on local, local government projects. So we hope that there are some avenues that we can work towards, but we, we are still hopeful, remain hopeful and optimistic that sales tax or proposal for sales tax can be a piece of that. Exactly how to slice the project up and how to approach it, I would say, is not an answer that we came to a conclusion on as a group. There was a lot of great discussion with that. And when I say how to slice it, I mean, what dollar amount specifically, if we're going to look at a chunk of it being funded through sales tax, what dollar amount of that specifically be applied towards each project site? That was one we had a lot of great discussion on, I thought, but not one that we were, in this short timeframe, able to come to an answer to. I included in the packet in that RCA just some information on the way I can see it going forward so that we can still move this process forward in the next two weeks or so, and allow ourselves at the same time the opportunity to come back as a committee and come back to the city council at work sessions and discuss just what those projects would look like and what funding amount would be allocated towards each of the sales tax that we would pursue with the state. The way the statute is listed in the state of Minnesota, essentially whatever project we move forward now to the state requesting their authority to vote for, it either, what we vote, when we pass a final resolution for the ballot question, either needs to be that project or less. It just can't be more. So if we would approve a resolution in the next ten days here or so, to, to meet that January, January thirtieth deadline of submitting something to the state, we would have an opportunity then to come back together and have a better discussion when the time allows, to talk maybe deeper into that budget and the, the mindset of how much money of the sales tax allocation would be tied towards each ballot question and each project when it comes to that. So, the first step I, that I see is if we're going to bring a sales tax proposal forward, it would be a resolution before that January thirtieth deadline, whether that be tonight or a night in the future. And then, from there, we'd get back together with our committee and ultimately with you all at a work session to have a more spirited discussion about the project budget and what amount of it gets earmarked towards, towards each project site as it pertains to a ballot question in November.
Thank you, Reed. I'm going to make the motion for the one point two-five percent sales tax over twenty years.
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. We'll have discussion. I think, attending the meeting last week with Reed and his committee and other members that were there, the mayor was there also, Mr. Larson, it was a great discussion and of what can possibly come back and be done. A range from, like you said, is there bonding money, is there other monies that we, we can go after? I mean, is there something that we can look at as a city, as, you know, land that we can sell? Is there buildings that we could sell, you know, et cetera, to given, commitment from the city also on our side other than sales tax? I think it's something that we need to consider very aggressively and seek it. I think that it's something that we need to make sure that we're moving forward. Because, you know, if we're looking at this and needing to get down there by the end of this month, after all this time and spent with the surveys and meetings over the last year and a half, two years, coming down to the last month and derailing it and pushing us out to twenty twenty-four, doesn't sit right with me. I think we need to move forward to make sure that we don't lose out on two years, three years down the road of costs of this project skyrocketing more and getting higher, and then, and all of a sudden the scale of that project keeps getting smaller. I think we need to move forward and figure out how we can get this done and for the city. Mayor?
I would agree with everything you said, Mr. Olsted. And anyone else who was at the meeting can sure chime in. I do want to thank you, Reed, and, and your building committee, and also the council for the professionalism that's been shown through this whole time. The initial reaction to certain things that happened a couple of weeks ago, you know, very, a lot of disappointment because they see what this project can do to that full dollar. They see the, the good that it's going to bring to our community. They see the, the good things that'll come to the kids and recreation in general. And, and yet, with the change that took place and the, and the slightly different way of coming at this from a tax standpoint, the group pulled right together and got right back to work and said, okay, now what are our next steps inside of this reality if that's what we're looking at, to go? You've done that, you're, the building committee's done that, the council has done that. And so again, the, the professionalism, the forward thinking, the community-mindedness, you know, I can't tell you how many people on both sides of this came to me and said, I bleed green, I bleed East Grand Forks. And so, with all of that, you know, with that degree of support and that degree of enthusiasm, I feel good going forward. I'm really glad they came back to the table and said, okay, let's, let's pull this together and go. Mr. Olsted is pretty firm on the twenty-one million, five hundred thousand, and I can just say publicly, by whatever combination that's brought together, it's probably going to be the one point two-five in twenty years. Twenty years is a good term to fund this. It matches real well with the, the life of the asset. I'll plan to support it. Thanks.
Helms?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I still have an issue with it in the fact of, we still haven't heard how much it's going to end up costing the city in the tail end as far as employees, everything else like that. I made a point to go to Thief River Falls and talk to them. They had a brand new, you know, we, we talked and we talked to Alexandria and Fergus and every place else, but we never brought Thief River into it. So I went and talked to them. They had a brand new building handed to them on a silver platter, and everybody knows, they struggled with it. I went up to talk to them, and they were telling me, up until the last couple of, three years, they, they hired venue works now to run it for them. And their, their maintenance cost is running them five hundred thousand dollars a year with, with venue works running it. When the city was running it, it was running one point five million a year to run it. And, and, and it was going up higher every year. And that's the reason why they hired venue works to do it, because of that. So, that's my big concern, is how we're going to, how we're going to pay to keep this maintenance up and everything else. Because in my, in my eyes, I don't see a lot of real good maintenance going on in our parks departments right now, in our, in our city parks. Those guys go out and they sit on the moor, they go as fast as they can, they run over cans and paper and everything else, they pick nothing up, they don't trim, they don't do nothing to make them look pretty, make them look nice. And I'm concerned about that here, too, about how we're going to take care of this and make everything work. I went to Park River and talked to them about their baseball field, because they just put in a brand-new turf baseball field up there. They did it the right way. They went out and got donations before they started. Everything was one hundred percent donations up there for that facility, and it's beautiful. It's beautiful. But they went out and done that first so they knew what they could do and what they had money for. So here, I feel like you're just, it's easy to just ask the, the taxpayers to pay for it and, and be done. And that's, that's kind of what I'm, you know, and then we don't have to go out and do any, any real hard work fundraising and stuff like that because, you know, we're going to, we're going to just raise it all here on sales tax. I don't think that people realize that that's going to go on their water and light bill, their cell bill, their, their heating, their XL, all, every, every bill they pay this is going to go on there. I don't think they understand all that.
If I could, I, you and I are on the same side of this one, Mr. Helms, and so I, I feel like I'm a good one to respond to that. The legislature kind of flipped us around, that we have to get legislative approval before we get the voter approval. And because of that, this thing does forever feel like the cart's ahead of the horse. But I think if we can clear this hurdle and, and bring it down there and make a good presentation to the legislature, we can come back here and do the fundraising in earnest, have a lot of good ideas circulating about getting some good local buy-in. We're still going to have close to a fifteen million dollar shortfall on this. This leaves the window wide open for fundraising. If we come in at twenty-one-five, it's actually a little over fifteen still to fundraise million, and that's probably beyond what we can reach. So the need is great, and it just feels bad because I think the legislature flipped us around on our timing. Just know, we're going to come as, as clean and solidly as we can on the fundraising, and, and we're going to need it. So, we're on, kind of on the same side of this one, but I do think the legislative change is what, is what makes it feel kind of bad about why we're doing the tax part before the local fundraising part.
And that's the other thing, as long as Ron, that mayor, I thought last week that you asked Reed to go back to his, his, his board and see what they could do to cut and get this thing down to a reasonable amount where we could work with. When I got that, when I got that message or letter from you, when you sent it to me, I didn't see hardly anything that looked like it was cut. You're still going for your thirty-seven million. The only thing you've done that I seen was went from thirty years to twenty years, which is what the mayor wanted. That's the only thing I really noticed about it, unless I missed something.
At the building committee, they did start the process of where would we trim? Where would we trim? Where would we trim? And they took out some big chunks just to show that we still have a project that can go forward, and it would be cut way back. And so they're ready to do that if necessary, if the fundraising doesn't come. So that process has begun.
And I'll take argument with Mr. Helms over the, I think you've got some pretty good employees. I'm part of the sanitary commission over there. I'll tell you what, that takes a lot of patience to do that.
If I could maybe just address that quickly, Mr. Helms, I, I appreciate your comments, but I, I do want to make a point of addressing them. I, I think, I'd invite any one of you to come and spend time with any of our Park and Rec employees at any time and understand what they do during the day and, and what their work responsibilities are. There is no doubt that there are areas in our department that I feel like could be maintained better than they are today. But I also will fight and, and, and say and stand up for them that I think they all work very hard within the means they're given and the time they have in the day. The one reference that you made towards the way that it's mown and we're running over pop cans and running over plastic bottles, that you name it, those are not Park and Rec employees. And I, and I know that that's to say that's a different department. It's certainly a city department. They are not operated, managed, or supervised by Park and Rec staff. Okay? So that's, again, another important piece of this. That's one example, but that's an important piece. I'd be happy to have you join us and see what we do on any day in any one of our buildings and, and understand. In the winter time right now, I know there was a comment from a council member about greenway trail maintenance. We have one employee right now assigned to maintain our greenway trails. After, he maintains all the city-owned sidewalks in town, then he does the greenway trails, and then last... and then lastly, he does the outdoor rinks. So we have outdoor rinks in our community right now that are, are almost unskatable. Haven't had warming houses open yet because the way we've had snow piled on one after another this year, it's been at the bottom of his responsibility list. That's one employee that's not assigned to an ice rink. All of our other employees are assigned to ice rinks and ice rink maintenance. So in the previous winters, we've been able to skate by with that because we've been able to hire part-time work. We are at the same place that any other department or any other city or business is in part-time work. We have not had a single applicant for that open position yet this winter. So there's one person out there working in outdoor ice rink maintenance, greenway trail maintenance on his own and begging the other people that work or have assignments within arenas to come and help when they can when they're not doing ice rink maintenance on the daytime hours. So, again, um, I, I'd invite you or any other council member at any time to come and spend some time with us and see what we do.
That's why we hired you, and I hope we never lose you.
Mr. Vetter?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the mayor's survey with the chamber did come back, we all got a copy of that, and there were fifty-one responses. Uh, I believe most of them were from businesses. Out of the fifty-one, thirty-seven opposed any of these improvements. Fifty-seven percent opposed the sales tax to pay for them. And if there was supposed to be a, a sales tax, twenty-seven percent still opposed it. Forty-seven percent wanted a one percent tax. Sixteen percent wanted a one and a quarter, and ten percent wanted one and a half. So overwhelming majority wanted one percent or less as a sales tax. Uh, over the weekend, I got an email from a baseball enthusiast, sent me a link to Mandan, North Dakota. Two thousand nineteen, they redid their ball diamond, artificial turf, new grandstands, offices for the coaches. Spent two and a half million dollars. When we first started this project, I can't remember what it was, but I think it was somewhere south of twenty million dollars that we were looking at, and now it's morphed into thirty-seven million. I'm a little upset that we have tacked on the ball field of the civic center just so that it doesn't have its own sales tax vote in the fall. And I think if we pull that back over to Stouse Park and just redo Stouse Park and show the citizens that, hey, we are being frugal with your money. Uh, if you spend two and a half million dollars at Stouse Park, that could be a phenomenal place over there. There's no reason it has to be on the civic center. I think we really need to, to sharpen our pencils on this project before it comes to the, the citizens or it's all going to get voted down and then you're going to have two years anyway before, bring it back up again. So I'll be voting no on a one and a quarter percent for sure. Thank you.
Vipel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
No.
Larson?
Yes.
Vetter?
No.
Helms?
No.
Motion is carried. Move on to claims. Consider authorizing city ministry clerk treasurer to issue payment of refund bills and payroll. Move. By Johnson.
Second.
Second by Vetter. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Vipel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers? Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Mary Gander?
Thank you. First of all, thanks again to all of our public works people. I, do you, y'all get any rest these days? You getting any rest? Little bit of rest. Every time we turn around, there's another inch of snow with a two-foot drift blowing in. So thank, please thank your people for us and, uh, the good work that they're doing. It looks really good. And about the time it looks really good, it snows again. But we appreciate all that they do in, in keeping us safe and getting us to and from where we need to go. Um, the only other thing, today at lunch, we had a citywide service club luncheon. So all the service clubs from the whole area were there. Mayor Bochensky and I had a chance to speak for up to about ten minutes each. And he sure is a, a nice, nice person and, and a good mayor for our sister city across the river. We had a little fun back and forth about, you know, we keep meeting up at different places, he and I, and it's kind of a perpetual thing now that we're kind of getting at each other. But that's part of the fun, and, um, you know, when you have a room full of people that are part of service clubs, they get it. They get why we're even on this planet, to help folks. And, you know, they talked about work they're doing for kids, work they're doing for older people, work they're doing for people with disabilities or illnesses, um, free medical care and all. Um, it was really just a, a privilege to be in the room with, with that group of people. And, um, just a nice reminder for us of really what, why we're here also is to serve the community. And I hope we, you know, even though at times it's a little contentious, I hope there's also some joy in it because we are doing the people's work, and it feels good. Thanks.
Vetter?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Mr. Helms?
Nothing, thanks.
Mr. Vipel?
Well, I'd like to thank Reed and the building committee. I think, uh, something that wasn't said here is they are looking at all aspects of this project and trying to cut where they can cut to bring it more down to a livable value. And I think what I heard the other day was excellent, and they're all willing to, to put the pen to it. Thank you.
Did forget to mention you were there, I apologize.
That's right.
You were in the corner. Mr. Johnson?
Both of you, Mr. Storthal and Mr. Hotman, thank you so much. And who's that other fellow behind you there? He does a pretty good little work for the city here, too, every now and then.
Thank you.
Mr. Larson?
Um, Mr. Vipel summed it up well, but thanks to everyone that, that has put in so much input into this, um, recreational facility project and looking forward to the future here. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to, uh, thank them also. I mean, that was, um, what the work has been done over the last year, year and a half, two years, with the Reed and committees. Um, I think it's, um, been great. I think you're doing a great job. I think you, uh, stay on task, uh, move forward, we'll work at it. Um, we'll get something done. I want to thank every, if we don't say it enough, I want to thank all the departments, too, what they do for the city, and I appreciate it. Um, luckily we don't have any grass tomorrow because, you know, that'd be a bitch, wouldn't it?
Mr. Murphy?
I, I just have one thing, just a reminder that I will be out of the office, uh, this Friday.
Anything, Mr. Olsted?
Uh, nothing, unless you have any questions from me.
Anything from department heads? Entertainer motion to adjourn.
Oh.
By Johnson, second by Larson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. He is adjourned.